I'm sorry I'm absent at this time, I will not be able to chair this meeting today. I'm in a while, so I would like to bylaws place a nomination for Marvin Duarte to be the Chair of the Policy Committee this evening.
Thank you, Trustee Johan Chenada. If. No. Would you be okay with that? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Johan Chenada.
Thank you, everyone. I apologize for not being there.
Yeah, thank you. Give me a second, please. Good evening, everyone. Call to order. Welcome to the Policy Committee meeting on Tuesday, January 9, 2024. Housekeeping items before we begin. A reminder that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our HCDSB website on a YouTube channel. Please mute your laptops and use the boardroom microphones when it's your turn to speak. Any participating teams, please keep your microphones muted and your camera off when you're not speaking. Please use the hand raise hand function in teams when you'd like to speak. I now request that the line acknowledgement be played.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround Dino greatly.
Our steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Omnivores.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Trustee Paul, could you please lead us in the opening prayer?
Sure. Can I make a sign of our feet? Lord, whether I leave behind, whether we leave behind a year of joy or of trial and difficulties, we pause to give thanks. Thank you for being with us every day of every year. Thank you for making all things new and for giving us the grace of fresh starts and new beginnings. Remind us of your presence in the days to come, even when we feel pushed or rushed by business. We ask that you be glorified in our name this year. Amen.
Thank you, Trustee Paul. We move on now to the approval of the agenda. You see the agendas, trustees in front of you. Are there any additions, additions or corrections to the agendas? Saying none, may I ask for a mover, please? Trustee Carabella moves.
A second.
Second by Trustee Powell. All in favor? Any bidding opposed? Saying none, the motion carries. Shall now move on to item number three, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Saying none, we shall now move on to item number four, which is delegations. There are no delegations tonight. So we shall continue to move on to item number five, which is approval of the minutes. The minutes in your package, trustees, are there any errors, additions or corrections to those minutes? Saying none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes? Trustee Agnew. Second or Trustee Powell. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Saying none, the motion carries. Shall now move on to item number six, which is action items. Item 6.1, policy I-04, cross boundary school attendance, Superintendent Bukai. So yeah, policy I-04, which is cross boundary school attendance. Trustees, can I have someone to move this policy, please? Trustee Agnew. Looking for a second, a trustee Powell. Superintendent Loft, are you online?
I am. Trustee, or sorry, I guess, Mr. Chair, I am online, yes.
You have the floor to speak to this particular policy.
Thank you, and through you, we're pleased to present everyone, and good evening. Policy I-04, cross boundary school attendance for review. This policy has been updated to reflect current terminology as well as some minor housekeeping changes. Dylan Gunnez Akara, our manager of planning services, or I are available to answer any questions relating to this policy, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Loft or Dylan? Or Dylan, would you like to speak to this? Okay, so we'll take the questions there. So trustees, any questions for Dylan or Superintendent Loft? Saying none. Us call. Saying none, I shall call the vote on this item, on this policy. Give me a second, looking for the recording sheet. Okay, we are going to vote on policy I-04, which is in front of us, trustees, that has been moved. Has been moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Powell. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Favor, trustee Kennedy. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Johan Chenada, are you there?
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Trustee Chua. Trustee Deepu. Trustee McGuire. Trustee. Who's that trustee?
Uh, yeah, student trustee McGuire, in favor. Thank you.
See department is in favor. So we have nine in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. Shall now move on to item 6.2, policy II-12, management of aggressive student behaviors within our schools. So trustees, this policy, if it changes in your package, Superintendent Jack Caldera, would like, I'll ask for a mover and second, and then I shall come to you. May I have a mover for this policy, trustees? Trustee Powell moves. Looking for a second. Trustee Agnew. Superintendent Jack Caldera, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Chair. So, policy II-12, management of aggressive student behavior within our schools, has been reviewed by the Policy Committee, and the revisions are included in your package as follows. The title, first of all, has been changed to reflect current terminology. Associated policies and procedures and references have also been added and updated. The definitions have been updated to include current language. The purpose, principles and requirements have also been updated to reflect inclusive and clarifying language. The revised policy, II-12, management of student behaviors posing imminent physical risk, as I mentioned, is in your package for your consideration and review by the Policy Committee.
Thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent? Saying none. Trustee Saunders.
Sure. Under requirement, so through you, Mr. Chair. When implementing practices and plans to manage student behavior, staff shall consider whether the proposed intervention might have a disproportionate impact on a student as protected by the Ontario Human Rights Code. Can you just, I guess, to Superintendent, can you give an example of how, you know, where this would apply, just where you anticipate us using that section? Superintendent Jack Caldera.
Thank you, through you, Chair. So as part of the review, we identified a definition that I think might be applicable to help support answering this question, the definition of disproportionality. And that really indicates that, and the evidence suggests that there are some students within our system that have been disproportionately, viewed as aggressive, don't have the same outcomes as other students in our school system. And so that component is included in the section of requirements to keep that lens and that understanding that we do have an obligation to ensure that there's an equity of outcome and that we're not using any educator bias in making any decisions around behaviors within our students, particularly of diverse or racialized background.
Thank you, trustee Saunders.
Just a quick, so this policy is regarding sort of imminent, was it students' behavior posing imminent physical risk? Could that potentially put like a staff or another student or somebody at risk of a potential harm? I mean, I'm just wondering, you know, how this gets applied and how we ensure that people are safe.
Superintendent Jack Caldera or Dr. Kline?
Through. Through you, Chair. Yeah, so there is an obligation to ensure that there is a safe working environment, but we do recognize that sometimes students, for a variety of reasons, as listed at the, just refer you to the purpose of the policy, where we want to recognize that students who do demonstrate any physical risk to themselves or to others are attended to in a way that is in keeping with their Catholic values, of course, and that safety and the well-being of others is a priority. The light of Superintendent Cordero, I almost said Caldera, is on, so I'm not sure if he wants to jump in, he's our safe school expert.
Superintendent Cordero, go ahead.
Thank you, and through Mr. Chair, in response to trustee Saunders questions or question, there are a number of wraparound supports that we provide, both the student who is the aggressor and the student or staff member who may be victimized. So they, for the student who may be victimized, for example, there's connections with the child and youth counselor or social worker. There were social distancing plans that sometimes are operational in the classroom, sometimes it, there's additional supports in terms of special education resources, staffing, it all depends on the profile of the learner. And same, the conversations that are had with the parents of both children, conversations have with the child who's the aggressor, looking at educational programming to change behaviors, in part through progressive discipline, but largely through curriculum and through social work and social child and youth counseling and so forth, so.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Saunders. Up next, trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I, my question was answered. I also was looking for like an example. So, I understand, so so how is one way that we restrain a student that would be potentially posing an imminent physical risk? So what are some of the strategies we use? Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera.
So it's progressive, it's not necessarily, it would never be the first response to a student, there'd be a number of strategies and measures in place before referring to the term restrain. As Superintendent Cordero mentioned, there are a number of wraparound supports, but also some of our students who may demonstrate this behavior may have, as referenced in the policy, like a safety plan or some kind of indicative response, so that we are, you know, looking at the child's behavior, not in a necessarily punitive, but as a symptom of what they're experiencing or how they're expressing themselves in some cases. So it really is incumbent on the school team to really review the complexity of needs and what is being presented in that situation to best respond to the student in some cases. Redirection, an alternative space, a quiet space, or in the worst case scenario, or in the instances where it's necessary, there would be a physical restraint, but we do have, you know, training applied before we would consider that approach, so it wouldn't just be anybody but the trained personnel in the building to respond. So it's challenged to capture the complexities of the situation where there is aggressive behavior in a policy, but I do think in consultation with both our human rights and equity and our human resources department, that you'll find that there's lots of red lines, but it's really to ensure that we have a policy and some guidance in those situations that can be heightened, that maintains the safety of the students and the safety of the staff.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella.
My follow-up would be regarding the safety plan. I did have, thank you for the answer for that, I understand. So in regarding the safety plan, so I know that it was focusing on the staff and the student itself. What about the other students in the class and how they are impacted by this particular behavior? What sort of, what is there to help them not be impacted? Thank you.
Superintendent.
Through you, Chair. So it really does leave some autonomy to the school team to respond, depending on the age of the student, the age of the peers, in an appropriate way to kind of have a debrief. There would be a debrief with the staff as well, as part of the conversation, and then just to build on to what Superintendent Cordero mentioned about those additional supports on those personnel, social workers, CYCs. There's quite a few that could complement a school team in ensuring that any aggressive behavior, any experience or aftermath of that is dealt with the dignity and that there's restorative opportunity for the student, because sometimes our students will struggle and demonstrate some behavior and we want them to also still feel welcomed and valued in the classroom environment along with the peer. So there's some intricacies that take place to ensure that, and this policy helps to guide that front end, but the back end is really where the rest of the school team would come into place.
Thank you. I'll move on to trustee Murphy. Sorry, you have your hand down. Trustee Kennedy, trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just in follow-up to what trustee Saunders was saying, so it says staff, same line, staff shall consider where the proposed interventions might have a disproportionate impact on a student. So like, what does that mean? Do they, are they saying that that student might have had many interventions already and doing more would be too much? Or is that like, what does that mean, disproportion, on the student level or on like a group level?
Superintendent Jack Caldera.
So when we're talking about the term disproportionality, we're talking about students who may be part of a racialized group, for example, who in their experiences, whether it's generational or themselves personally, may have had experiences that would be heightened in this situation. So for example, we talked about a restraint or for, you know, in a situation where there would be a student who that would be perhaps triggering to be restrained based on a lot of the other components or other experiences they've had or witnessed, maybe in social media in their community. So that's what we're talking about in terms of disproportionality. We know that certain behaviors are seen as more aggressive when it's demonstrated by males versus females. If they're racialized, that's even more, you know, sometimes that is considered to be a bias that some educators may have without recognizing that that biases is in existence. So this allows staff to really reflect on who it is that we feel is demonstrating the aggressive behavior and how our response may lead to a bigger or broader systemic issue. So that's where that definition would support or would help as a reflection, opportunity for reflection before responding to a student in a situation where there's aggressive behavior.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy. Oh, Superintendent.
Can I add to the response?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. Some of that disproportionality also rests in the areas of progressive discipline, right? We try to work along a continuum that builds not only through sort of consequences that are applied to the aggressor, but also educational programming. And unfortunately, sometimes historically, we've had the leap directly to suspension or classroom withdrawal, or in previous leadership groups, even exclusion. So we no longer have exclusion in our school board, where many times students with a unique profile with disability were not necessarily being allowed into the school or allowed into the regular classroom to receive direct instruction because there were concerns about physical behaviors and so forth. So what the important pieces are, is that we always have the programming, the human resources, and the educational opportunities for that child to be fully integrated and to learn in that, you know, in that context. So that is, that's an area where maybe there has been in the past disproportionality, and we have brought down those barriers and created more opportunities for students to be successful.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. Trustee Kennedy.
Just to follow up, I, through you, I heard Superintendent Jack was mentioning about, we have some evidence of impacts. Do we have that evidence? Can you share the evidence voting on the policy?
Superintendent Jack Caldera.
So when I speak of evidence, we do have our ABR strat plan that does suggest that we have some work to do in terms of eliminating barriers for some of our racialized students. But the evidence I was speaking about was in a much broader sense. In the province in particular, we've had some reports. We continue to get reports that's provide us with additional insights on the experiences of racialized students and racialized families. Not exclusive to those situations, but certainly referring to that in this, in this instance. The Ontario Human Rights Commission also does indicate and share some guidance in terms of making sure that we do not have barriers, additional barriers for students. And so that kind of captures it all in this policy.
Thank you, Superintendent. I shall, trustee Kennedy, you have more questions? I'll come back to in a bit. Trustee Carabella's hand is up, and then I'll come back. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question regarding this policy. Has it been taken to SEAC or is it going to be seen at SEAC? Thank you.
Superintendent Jack Caldera.
I guess, I believe it was, we went for a hat-trick. We had brought it three times to SEAC to get some valuable feedback, so.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Kennedy.
Just when we speak of disproportionality, do we also look at other things like maybe socioeconomic status or like any other forms? We do? Oh, because you just mentioned the two.
Superintendent Jack Caldera.
Through you, Chair. Yes, disproportionality is a broad term. It captures a number of scenarios and factors I referred to to for example purposes, but disproportionality could be applied to a variety of situations. The outcome is the same, where there is, you know, a disproportionate amount of students disadvantage for whatever the criteria is in our school system, and we're ensuring that this policy does not add an additional barrier or contribute to disproportionality as we're committed to kind of eradicating those trends where they do exist.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera. Trustees, do we have any further questions? I see no other hands up, so I shall now call, take it to a vote. So this, this policy was moved by trustee Powell, seconded by trustee Agnew, that I shall call the vote. Trustee Carabella.
Abstain.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy. Okay, sure. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Johan Chenada. Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Hold her in his box.
Thank you. Get some rest. Trustee Saunders abstain. Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee, trustee Duarte is in favor, and trustee Kennedy. Favor. Abstain. So we have you have six in favor, three abstention. None opposed, motion carries. The policy will now go on to the board meeting for approval. Shall now move on to item 6.3, which is policy II-41, school uniform dress code, school dress code. Trustees, can I have someone move this policy and then I will pass it on to Superintendent? May I have a mover, please? Trustee, trustee Powell. May I have a second for this? Seconded by trustee Agnew. I shall now pass this on to Superintendent Loft for discussion, and then trust is the last question. Superintendent Loft, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. We're pleased to present policy II-41, school uniform dress code and school dress code for review. This policy has been updated to provide more flexibility to the board with respect to contract length. The contract will still be for a three-year term, however, we have added the option to extend for a maximum of two additional years. Dan Takalsik, our manager of purchasing services, or I are available to answer any questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. With this, I shall open up the floor for discussion. Trustees, please put your hand up. You have trustee Carabella, you have your hand up, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask, so on page five of nine, it talks about the, under the uniform vendor, and it talks about who's in the RFP. Or who, who is. And I was surprised to read there was no trustee on that committee. Here. So it says the uniform provider will be selected through a competitive bid process. Includes HCDSB staff as appointed by director, at least three members of CPIC, and three members of SEAC will be involved in establishing the criteria for the competitive bid process, and the student focus group may be consulted. So just to refresh my memory, whether we did not have a trustee on that committee, thank you.
You're right, trustee Carabella. To my memory, we had some trustees always there over the past years, but I'll pass it on to Superintendent Loft, and maybe he can give us some information. Superintendent Loft?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to trustee Carabella. We did, if you remember, and I'm not sure if you were on, I don't think you were on it last time, trustee Carabella, but we did have trustee representation the last time we did the RFP. Dan Takalsik is on the line as well. Dan can kind of give us the number that we had attend last time. I know there's probably at least two or three trustees, Dan, if you're there.
Yes, I can speak to that through you, Mr. Chair. So we've always had trustees on the RFP evaluation committee. Typically, it is between two to three volunteers that we do get from the trustee group. You're right, trustee Carabella, it's not specifically outlined as that, but we have always, in all RFPs that we have done, the last three for sure, that I saw through, we've always had trustees on the evaluation committee.
And trustee Carabella, if you remember, before the summer break, I think I sent an email out to all trustees asking for volunteers, so they have trustees and they're always there, so.
So as a follow-up, then it should state there, it should be included in there, that trustees, as you say, if it's volunteer or trustees are invited or some kind of indication, the trustees also sit on that committee.
So let me put it back to Superintendent Loft to suggest changes, if at all. Do you have any suggested changes, trustees, trustee Carabella?
Well, I guess it would say include participation by HCDFC staff as appointed by the Director of Education. There could be a comma. Two, I don't know, two, three trustees.
Yeah, and include trustees.
And include trustees, yeah.
Okay.
And include trustees.
Superintendent Loft, any comments on that?
No, it's what we've already done, we've always done anyways, Mr. Chair, so if we're the board to add the writing into it, I don't see an issue at all, having, having, I think, because it's what we, it's our practice anyways, right? It has been our, historically has been our practice, so.
Trustee, do you have any concerns with adding and trustees there? Trustee Saunders?
Sorry, is Superintendent Loft going to take this back and add that section in?
No, we'll do it online here. We'll try to see whether we can add it right now. Superintendent Bukai, can we, can we add that one? No, we'll do it online here. We'll try to see whether we can add it right now. Uh Superintendent McCarch, can we, can we add that one?
Yeah. Chair Andrea Swinden is on the line and she's gonna add the change for trustees to review.
Okay, thank you. It'll be good. Okay, trustee Carabella, well, that's done. Do you have uh any other, any other item? Or that's the only item that you have? Okay. Okay, right, in the in the interest of saving some time, while that's being set up in the background, I'll jump to trustee McGuire. Trustee McGuire, you have a question, which is, uh, you can have, you have the floor?
Yeah, thank you through you, Chair. Um, I was just reading through the policy and I noticed that it mentions that it, the HDSB will work with uniform, uniform purveyor to provide uniforms that meet the physical and sensory needs of all students. So I was just wondering what this accommodation might look like and how does the board ensure that these accommodations are implemented from all students who would benefit from these accommodations? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair, and I'll pass it over to to uh uh our manager, Dan Takalsik. I know we've had some uh sensitivities with some of the uniform materials in the past that we, that our providers have addressed, but Dan, I'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and through you, uh, Mr. Chair. So so we do address those uh concerns, absolutely. Uh, part of that is ensuring that we have uh members of CAC on the evaluation committee. And as far as our uh valuation criteria through the RFP process, uh, we also speak um to it on on a number of points to um in ensure that providers can provide um, uh, some sort of alternative clothing for uh sensitivities or 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 other issues that we may come across, um even um, you know, in in terms of sizing and and special needs. So it is addressed uh within the evaluation criteria and we also ensure that we have CAC members uh on the RFP committee who would obviously uh put some input into the uh the requirements within uh, within that RFP.
Thank you, trustee McGuire. Any follow-up?
No, thank you. Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you, uh trustee McGuire. We'll come back to trustee Carabella's question here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman?
I've pulled up the document, as you can see. I just need to have them trustee Carabella repeat the the amendment because I wasn't in the room at the time, so I just came back as you were asking for a change.
Trustee Carabella, can you repeat? Uh, which bullet?
It's on page five of nine, under the uniform vendor. That's right, the uniform. It was the um second bullet. It includes everyone except trustees. So also, if you have a way of adding it in, um, Andrea, I'd be amenable to that. I was just gonna say as a, after as appointed by the Director of Education, comma, uh, including trustees, including trustees.
Could I say, um, what about if we said through a competitive bid process that will include participation by HCDSB staff and trustees?
Okay, but I'm not sure if the trustees are appointed by the director.
No.
He might appoint the staff, but it's.
Trustee after.
Okay, so um how about participation by trustees? As well as HCDSB staff? Is that, I don't know if that's clear. Either that or we need a new sentence. So participation by HCDSB staff as appointed by the De- Director of Education, the um, I'll change the color in a second. Would that work?
So last time when I put out to all trustees, we had feedback only from two trustees. So, yeah. Yeah. So this is generally driven by the RFP by Dan. He would say three trustees. Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
Correct. Trustee?
Last time up.
Up to three trustees, okay? Does that look?
Yeah, that looks good. Thank you, Andrea.
Uh, up to three. Trustees, do we have any concerns with adding this line? You all agree? Okay, thank you, trustee Carabella. Uh, we shall now move on down to the next speaker. So this line will be in the policy when it take to vote. It's unanimously agreed upon. Uh, up next, trustee Kennedy. Uh, your hand is up, you're the floor.
So I have a question through you, Mr. Chair, to our director. So if elementary schools have a uniform, it says, um, you know, navy blue and white. Um, to supplement the schools, may add additional items, shirts, sweaters, vests. Does the student have to buy that through the uniform provider if they have their own navy blue and white apparel? The dress, where, can they wear that? Are they required to buy it through the vendor?
Detective Klein or Superintendent Loft?
Yeah, I'll defer over to Superintendent Loft.
So to my knowledge, they have to buy it from the uh vendor, but the pants, you can go and get the pants as long as they're navy blue. Only elementary, navy blue as long as they're navy blue in color. But uh, I'm not so well informed, but I'll pass it on to Superintendent Loft, Superintendent Loft?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You are correct. So uh, last time we brought the policy forward, we had amended to allowing the parents or the guardians to purchase their pants from any provider, including our uniform provider, uh as long as they are the navy blue. Everything else is from the provide, is from uniform provider.
Okay, thank you. Uh trustee Kennedy?
I have a question about um, can elementary voting. Been through this myself. Just wondering why we only let each family have one vote when one family may have three or four children in the school and some may have one. I think it would be fair to have it, you know, represented by population, just like all voting everywhere. Should, can we make an amendment to that?
I think it is a family decision to to vote. I think so because I've been through this many times. But again, I will pass it on through to Superintendent Loft to uh to talk about it. Superintendent Loft?
Um, and through you, and to you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy, um, it's, again, maybe I'll pass it off to one of our family of school superintendents who've been through the process probably more because my only time through the process, trustee Kennedy, was as a parent, as a direct, as a parent as well. Um, so maybe if I can add it back to some of the family of school superintendents that may be in attendance to see, to address that, that concern.
I'll pass this to Superintendent McCarch, who's here. Superintendent McCarch?
Thank you, Chair. I'll start and I'm not sure if Superintendent Denalfo is on the line as well. But this is a process that has, was reviewed and um this particular policy went out for stakeholder feedback as well. So it was quite an involved um process to determine how the votes would be registered, uh trustee Kennedy. So at this point, um, it's been a process that we've had in place for quite a while and we most recently had a number of schools go through. So it's been a um quite a successful process.
Thank you. Um, I'll go on to trustee Murphy and then if trustees have questions, trustee Murphy? Your follow-up? Good, go ahead.
Just wondering if we're like, you know, economically equitable, I mean, if you have a a family with four students, they have to buy for four. And it's gonna impact them more because they have other clothes and then the the dress code. So I just don't know why they wouldn't receive more votes. They're the ones that are financially. And so I just think that would be, that would be fair, you know. Anyways, that was my thought process on that. But we can go back for the queue for the other questions.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's right or wrong answer there, but uh, we can, we can mull over that again. Trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. Um, okay, my question is in regards to the current vendor contract. What is the end date for this current vendor contract?
Superintendent Loft?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, it's January thirty-first, the end of the month.
Uh trustee Murphy, here.
So my follow-up is, was the option to extend in the original RFP with McCarthy?
Uh, Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it was not because that's why we're bringing it forward to today to have it amended. It was not. So our policy before was as you saw, um, trustee Murphy, as you saw direct in front of us, what we've added is a red. So how it was worded before was the three years.
Follow-up, sure.
Then my follow-up is, we should really be having another RFP process this month, correct?
Superintendent Loft?
Um, not necessarily, no. Um, that's not necessarily what we we can do. We we have extended in the past as well. Uh, we, as long as you have agreement from both sides of the of the process, we have had that um come forward. So, or sorry, both sides of the vendor and with the board. So um maybe I'll leave it at that for now.
Another follow-up?
Go ahead.
So is the o- option to extend supposed to be it part of the RFP process? Enlighten me because I don't, I'm not super familiar with this. I'm just trying to wrap my head around the entire thing.
So was the option, so we're adding that option to of of essentially avoid any ambiguity with the RP process. We're putting that in there um just to add that wording. Um, maybe I'll pass it to Dan as well on it if he has anything to add to that.
Uh, thank you. Um, could I just have the question repeated if you don't mind?
Well, I'm trying to understand if the option to extend is supposed to be part of the RFP process historically. Um, if so, shouldn't we be putting out a request for an RFP this month? Or, I mean, I understand that you're asking us to vote on this and I'm just trying to understand if, in fact, this is fair because it's being added on after the fact.
Uh, to my memory, I think we had a situation once where in the past, maybe have increased by a year and not to the policy, but as a motion. Um, but again, I'll leave this with with Dan. Dan?
To add one more thing to be clear, when I say fair, equitable, I mean to the parents because ultimately they're purchasing the uniforms, right? It's, yeah.
Okay. And thank you for clarifying that because I wasn't sure what you meant by the the fair um was was coming from. Uh, I was stressing it more from the vendors' side of it, uh agreeing to it. Um, is it fair to the parents? So this is just on the uniform provider, um, trustee Murphy, this isn't on the fact whether they're having a uniform or not. So I I I don't necessarily know where the fairness would come into play. Um.
Well, well, can I, can I just give you an example?
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
So perhaps we would have a uniform provider that might be more affordable to our parents. Um, McCarthy is definitely on the higher end in in my opinion, but I don't know if someone else could speak to that.
Trustees here, we can't take names of vendors and their products, uh, pricing, pricing, cost. You gotta be a little careful about it.
It's public knowledge, but okay, I guess that's my, okay, I retract my opinion statement. But what I'm just saying, I I'm just trying to understand as, you know, from a transparency point of view, um, should in fact there be a bid put out to find more competitive pricing instead of extending this current contract?
Uh, I'll pass this to Superintendent Loft?
Um, Mr. Chair, I believe some of this discussion was also done in camera as well.
To answer trustee Murphy's question, um, the way I understand it, this is a policy where we are trying to build it into a policy. We have extended contracts in the past through a motion. So there's, there's one way or the other we can.
Fair enough.
It's been done. But this is a long-term thing which you are planning. So it's a high-level policy which we are making a decision.
Okay, can I ask one final question?
Sure, sure.
So, so, so as of January thirty-first, is this a brand-new contract, three years plus an option for two? Or is this the point at which we're adding the extension of the two years?
Superintendent Loft?
Um, Mr. Mr. Chair, uh, I'll remind trustees that we had a discussion similar to this in camera. Maybe I'll, I'll, again, I'll leave it at that for now. Um, this is a go-forward basis, you're correct, and we have the, we have voted in the past historically to make amendments to contracts um, and extend where it's been agreed to. Um,
So, uh.
That's what's.
This is a policy. See right now, we're not talking about a contract. So what we are discussing now is this policy, we are trying to add this to your paragraph, a paragraph with that to you in the policy. So we're not talking specifically about a contract. We're talking about this policy. So let's look at it that, in that uh lens.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, so, thank you, trustee. Uh, come back to, let me go to trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly, you're the floor. Okay, trustee Kelly, put a hand down. Trustee Kennedy, back to you.
Yeah, is there anything that precludes us from having more than one vendor? Can we have more than one vendor and parents can decide where they want to buy from for competition?
Uh, so I think the policy talks about the RFP process and you select one vendor. So with the policy, let be redone for multiple vendors. If that's the will of the board, then it'll have to go through that process for discussion. Uh, but as of now, the policy says there's gonna be one vendor and that's the answer. But if trustees want to have multiple vendors, it's, and think about it from business point of view. Uh, would, would two vendors like to compete for the same product in this environment? No. So it doesn't make business sense.
They don't have to, then they don't have to do it.
So again, uh, let me pass this to Superintendent Loft. Superintendent Loft, do you have any thoughts on this? I give my opinion.
Yeah, um, to to, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy, it would be, are you saying like a uniform program where you would just have like a certain color shirt and like a patch or something put onto it? Is that what you're referring to? Um, because that is a change, a significant change to our current policy. Um, having multiple vendors again would be difficult for for offering that level of service, trustee Kennedy. If you're having to have stores and pop and stores without the region supplying inventory and such with multiple vendors. Um, so I'm not sure if you're talking about a uniform, more of a uh like a uniform program per se, where you have to have a white shirt or a blue shirt with a, with a patch or or something of that effect. And that would be something very different than what we currently have.
I see, I see Dan's hand up, so let me get Dan online. Dan?
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. From what I understand, I believe the question is, um, can we award or would it be beneficial to award to multiple vendors um, through through the competitive bid process? Is that, is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay, so um, you you know, to be quite honest, there's um, there's nothing precluding us from doing that. We we certainly could. Now, uh, what we have to understand is that the uniform program, it really is a niche market. We're, we're talking um probably about three, maybe four um legitimate uh providers that would participate um on this. Um, what we have found in the past, and we have done a request for information in the past as well, uh regarding the uniform program. Um, and and the information that sort of came out of that is um that you sort of diminish uh the HCDSB community's leverage by um sort of parcelling out um, a a contract to to multiple vendors. Um, so so really, there, there's not a lot. Um, you you know, there, there's not a lot of interest from, from the suppliers to sort of be haphazardly um, providing uniforms to one school or another, or maybe a couple of schools or handful of schools uh versus having the rights to all the schools where where their purchasing power um, can it can certainly come into play in terms of the number and the quantities that they're ordering from their vendors and passing those savings on to, on to the uh HDSB community. Uh, what we also found is um through our community um surveys that we did the last time we reviewed the policy, uh, we, we sort of wanted to have a uniform program where we would have regional stores. Um, something like that just wouldn't be viable if we were dealing with two or three different vendors. Uh, that, they just wouldn't have the the volumes to cover their overheads for that. Uh, I I'm not opposed to looking at it. Uh, to be quite honest, I I don't know that you're going to see any more um, competition. um competition if you sort of open that up. Uh, part of that RFP process, there's um, there's a fair margin of points that are allocated towards the pricing program um that the uniform providers are um are are proposing and and that is evaluated. So so really, you know, there is quite an incentive for for these uniform suppliers to provide their best pricing and their best uh uniform program, whether that entails uh having retail outlets um in the region of Halton, which we've uh always sort of made a a mandatory uh criteria as well. So once you start taking that away, I I I strongly feel you lose that leverage.
Just to add to that, trustee Kennedy, uh I participated myself in several RFP uh processes. They're quite intense and they're quite detailed and, you know, so there's a lot of involvement over there. So when you participate in one of those uh RFP process, you understand the depth that you get into. So anyway, uh trustee Kennedy, you have further questions?
Just helps it like I know that their purchasing power will be better, but so is their pricing power. So I I always wonder like, you know, do we have any recourse if we're one year into a five year contract? Put a five year and the price of these pants go up twenty five percent. Do we have anything we can, like in parents just can't afford it, is there anything we can do to go back and say, like, if we only have one? Or do we have any kind of price controls on how much it can go up per year? Is it inflation? Because they have pricing power if they're the, if one person is the only vendor.
Let's check.
My heating bill.
Let's, yeah, good question. Let me check. Dan, will there be any controls in place for pricing uh with the vendors? I'm not sure what uh what happens in the background.
Yeah, so the uh, the contract term is for three years. So for those three years, uh, the pricing is uh held firm. It's at the time of negotiating an extension, whether or not there will be a pricing adjustment at that point. Um, but for those three years, we can, we can assure that the the pricing will be held firm.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. I see no other hands up, trustees? Oh, oh, you have a further question? Okay, go ahead.
I have a question about elementary school uniforms. How many elementary schools do we have now of the total have a uniform policy? For director line.
Um, director Klein is aware of it, superintendent uh Loft. Superintendent Denalfo, are you online? Superintendent Denalfo, I see you there, yes.
I am online.
Yes, uh, did you hear the questions?
I I I do. I don't have the exact number of um of schools. What I can share with you is in Burlington, a majority of the schools are in Oakville, half of the schools are. No schools in Georgetown have a uniform. So any schools who've wanted a uniform have come forward through the committee um and get gone through their own school for a vote. Um, at this time, over the last three years, no schools who have gone through the uniform vote have gone forward with a uniform. So more than half, but not all. Does that answer your question, trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, I just had, just last, I just got through this process too. So I just have a concern about, um, you know, if if parents in grade one to six or JK to six get to vote and it's just over fifty percent, it applies to everybody, but um, you know, just given that the enrollment at elementary schools, I wonder if there's an appetite to maybe make that vote a little bit higher. I don't know if any people are coming here for a uniform, but if one is imposed, could that potentially lose us future students, knowing there's that extra cost of coming to a a Catholic school versus a public elementary school? And how would that, Mr. Chair, how would that process go if, let's say instead of fifty, it's fifty five or sixty?
So what I know about the uniform process is if students cannot afford to get uniforms, it's the principals who take care of them, then we have the Alton Catholic Children's Foundation who provides for them. So the uniform is not a barrier to to my knowledge. And superintendent Denalfo, can you add on to that superintendent Loft?
Through you, Chair. Um, the uniform is not a barrier. So trustee Kennedy, any family who has a financial implication for the uniform, um, the vendor has programs in place. So that communication is with the principal, between the family and the principal. The principal then gets in touch with the provider to ensure that the uniform is provided to the family. There is no family where there's a uniform in place at a school that would be limited to having any uniform piece because they could not afford it. Okay, so if everything is put in place to ensure every family does have a uniform for their children. So there's no financial barrier. Any family who comes to the school and says, unfortunately, we cannot afford a uniform or for some situation, may not be able to. The provider always provides. That has been a longstanding practice with all the providers that we've had with the uniform.
Okay, so, great. Yeah, yeah, so there's no financial barrier. Some people may not want to go through that process, but just a personal barrier, they may not want uniforms. All I'm saying is we have a enrollment issue. Just wondering if there's an appetite to maybe make that vote a little bit higher. If some people may just not want one for other reasons. And if we, if we want to change that number, how would we do that? Would it be here or would that be another?
So again, uh, it's a change in the policy. If any change in this policy to that extent, uh, we'll have to go out for stakeholder feedback. Uh, am I correct? Uh, superintendent, uh, okay.
Thank you, Chair. That that would constitute um a substantial change because it was a, again, it was the process that was um, and superintendent Denalfo was, has a long history with this as well. It was a process that was vetted um through stakeholder feedback and through the groups that uh were mentioned earlier, um, who participated on um in the other processes. So I know from my, from my own experience, trustee uh Kennedy, it it's usually very clear um uh when the vote comes through that whether parents want it or not. And and there's a lot of, through that communication plan, there's a lot of promotion on on um having parents at least cast a vote. And the return on that uh process is usually over ninety percent. I know that in the three schools that I went through the process um for or against, it's been ninety three, ninety four, ninety five percent have voted. So you're getting a true reflection of what the community wants.
Okay, so I see, oh, trustee Carabella, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Um, just um, in regards to that, was it always fifty percent or was it at some point higher and then went down to fifty percent? Through the history of this uh policy.
It has been fifty percent for at least fifteen.
Oh, plus one, yeah.
Yeah, fifty, yeah, fifty percent plus one.
From the beginning. You just don't remember.
Yep. Okay, trustees, we have had a good discussion on this policy II forty one. Uh, it was moved by trustee Powell, seconded by trustee Agnew. Uh, with this, I shall call the vote on policy II forty one. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
All?
Favor.
Trustee Sanders?
Favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
I'm in favor. Uh, so we have eight in favor, one opposed, no extension. Motion carries. This policy shall go to the next board meeting. Forty eight, violent, violent threat risk assessment. Uh, may I have a mover for this item, uh, that we move this item for discussion? Looking for a mover, please. Trustee Sanders? Looking for a seconder? Trustee Carabella? I shall now pass this on to superintendent uh superintendent Cordiero, is it? Superintendent Cordiero to speak to this superintendent Cordiero, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to present policy II forty eight, violent threat risk assessment to the policy committee for consideration regarding the revisions as recommended by staff. References have been updated and minor housekeeping changes have been made throughout. The revised policy is attached for the committee's review and consideration.
Thank you, superintendent Cordiero. Trustees, do we have questions for superintendent Cordiero or discussion questions? I see trustee Carabella, you have your hand up. Is it for the previous policy? Okay. Uh, trustees, do we have any further questions to for superintendent Cordiero or for general discussion? Can we have the policy up there on the screen, please? Thank you. I see no, no hands, no hands up. That means we are good. So I shall now take it to a recorded vote. This policy was moved by trustee Sanders, seconded by trustee Carabella. Trustee Kelly? How do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
Favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte is in favor. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
So we have nine in favor, none opposed, no extension. Motion carries. This policy shall go to the next board meeting. We shall now move on down to item six point five, policy II dash O one, O one. Uh, grievance process, uh, non-unionized group members. May trustees, may I have uh someone move that this policy be placed on the table? Please, trustee Murphy? Trustee Murphy, did you move? Okay. Looking for a seconder? Trustee Sanders? Superintendent Oldman, you have the floor to speak to this item.
Thank you. And through you, Chair, uh, good evening, everyone, and happy new year. Uh, this uh, this evening, policy triple I zero one uh has been reviewed by human resources staff. We have made a minor um update to the requirement section and some minor housekeeping's uh housekeeping changes throughout as well. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. Trustees, uh, do you have questions on this policy or superintendent Oldman? Saying none, it looks like we are good. I shall now call the vote on this policy. Policy III I dash O one, moved by trustee Murphy, seconded by trustee Sanders. Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
All?
Favor.
Trustee Sanders?
Favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte is in favor. Trustee Carabella?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
So we have nine in favor, none opposed, no extension. Motion carries. This policy shall go to the next board meeting for uh approval. We now move on down to item six point six, policy III I dash O four, employee assistance program. Uh, this will be spoken to by trust superintendent Oldman. Trustees, may I have a mover to place this policy on the table? Looking for a mover, please. Trustee Agnew? Looking for a seconder, please. Trustee Sanders? Superintendent Oldman, you have the floor to speak to this uh item.
Thank you, uh, through you, Chair. Uh, policy triple I O four again has been reviewed by human resources services staff. Um, and apart from minor housekeeping changes, there have been no other changes to the policy. Um, but I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. Trustees, do we have questions for superintendent Oldman on this uh policy or discussion? Trustee Murphy, I see you putting your hand up. So, yeah, you have the floor.
Mister Chair and through you. Um, I have some, a couple of general questions about the EAP. Is that okay? Okay, um, the first is, um, I'm just wondering if it's possible that you could tell me how much this program costs the board?
Superintendent Oldman?
Uh, yeah, so it is, it is a utility based um charge. So I don't have the number in front of you, but I'm happy to provide that back.
Yeah, so superintendent Oldman can provide it. Right now, we're talking about a policy, so in the background, she can provide that here.
No problem. Can I ask a follow up?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so just reading through it, I noticed that I'm just, um, I'd like to understand it a little bit more. So I know, I noticed in the policy, it mentions that um, a teacher can be referred to the program and it would appear that it it would be due to um performance. So I'm just wondering how that is assessed and yeah, that was my first question.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman.
Thank you and through you, uh, Chair. I I guess I would just qualify or or clarify perhaps that I would, I wouldn't. The the point of the employee assistance program is is one of 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 proactivity. Um, and I appreciate in the case when we're perhaps helping or or offering the referral in. It's not necessarily out of performance base, but perhaps out of a a basis of of wellness or support. Um, so so that I would just clarify that that would be kind of the the nuance of when it might be that it's initiated for the individual or suggested that the individual participate in a program, not necessarily performance driven, but more from a wellness and support perspective.
Trustee Murphy?
Uh, that that's it. Thank you.
Okay, we can come back to you. We have a trustee Kennedy's hand up here, you have the floor.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Just have a question. Do we have an EAP committee, trustees of the committee?
Yes, we have a formal committee.
How often does it need? And who's on that committee?
Uh, superintendent Oldman, I think trustee Murphy is on the committee. Uh, superintendent Oldman can answer how many times you meet, I'm not sure.
Through you, Chair. Uh, it's actually in the application and scope, so we do meet on an annual basis. So that is a one time annually, we meet with the EAP provider. Um, it's in the second last sentence there of um the statistics regarding the program are provided to the committee. Um, and that's done once annually. Um, I think trustee Murphy, you were on last year at least in my most recent recollection. Um, so so that is um what takes place in that annual meeting.
Just one trustee?
There's one trustee and one alternate.
Who's the alternate?
I have no idea. Need to look at the chart. I can, I can, I can.
Because I don't, I don't remember getting any invites, that's why.
Oh, okay, so the, you're the alternate, you are the alternate. Okay, so if you're an alternate last year, you're an alternate this year. So nothing has changed there. Uh, but superintendent Oldman, do you invite alternates to the meeting?
Through you, Chair. Typically, the the practice that I've I've carried on is that I invite the the um trustee and if they're unable to attend, then I would invite the alternate um
Yeah.
With due notice and and advance notice.
So there's no harm in inviting an alternate. I think it's a good practice for the alternate to go to the meeting too. Uh, because in case uh they need to carry forward and you can't make it, then the next alternate should be there. And again, it's preferred that alternate be there, but if you can't be there, that's fine. Trustee Kennedy, any further question? Uh, trustee Murphy, your hand up again. Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and through you to superintendent Oldman. Um, one last question, uh, hopefully, is um, how often? Um, I'm not sure if I'm wording this correctly, but how often do we uh put out a request to procure a service provider? I guess, how how long is the contract with the service provider that provides this program?
Uh, superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Chair. Uh, that is a very good question. Uh, I don't have the immediate response. Since I've been here, we have not gone through an RFP process. And my understanding is that it has not um been a process that had been undertaken. Um, I think the existing relationship, it it has changed through merger and acquisition through the the vendor themselves. Um, but it has been in place like a notably significant time. I'm not sure if superintendent Loft or or um Dan Tocalsi can 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 shed that light contractually, um, but it but it has not been and it's not up for renewal as of yet. But to your specific question, I'm happy to provide that if if no one can add further thought for immediate response, um, when I provide the uh the financial component that you've requested as well.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Further questions?
The last question I have through you, Mister Chair, is um, is this program we're we're required to be offered to HCDSB staff through like um contracts that we have with a union or is it something that the the board offers, you know, just like a goodwill service kind of thing?
Uh, superintendent Oldman?
Thank you and through you, Chair. So this would be separate and apart from any other, what I'll call it, um, health and and well being benefits that are that are managed through um the affiliates in varying ways through the employee life and health trusts. So those are managed through the central table and bargaining. This is separate and apart from that. So it is not a requirement, but it is um an optional program that we offer and and was required by virtue of the policy. I guess I would say that way rather than than through a collective agreement requirement.
Thank you.
Sorry, not to belabor, but one last point. So you mentioned optional. Does that mean that as that staff have a option to opt into this? Or is it automatically included in their employment?
Uh, go ahead, superintendent Oldman.
Through you, Chair. Um, so it is offered to all staff automatically. Yeah. Um, it's 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 optional whether they want to pursue the services and perhaps I I would word it that way. But in terms of it being offered, we offer it to to all staff. Yeah.
That's everything. Thank you.
Great, yeah. Okay, so I see no other trustees hand up for policy II dash O four. It was moved by trustee Murphy, seconded by trustee Kennedy. I shall now call the vote on this item, uh, policy II I dash O four. Trustee uh Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
All?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
Favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte is in favor. Trustee Carabella? Trustee Duarte is in favor. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, oh, sorry, nine in favor. Nine in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. So it was seconded by trustee Kennedy. Sorry, one second, hold on. Oh, I was looking at the wrong page, sorry. It was moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Sanders. Correct the record, okay? Trustee Agnew and Sanders. Thank you for pointing that out. And with that, we have completed our action items. We shall now move on to discussion items. Item number seven, there are no discussion items today. Item number eight, information items. Item eight point one lists the upcoming agenda items for the February thirteenth, twenty twenty four policy committee meeting. Item number nine, miscellaneous information. There is no miscellaneous information. Item number ten, correspondence. There was no correspondence submitted. Item eleven, in camera, we do not have to go in camera. Item number twelve, motion to excuse absent committee members. So we have, uh, trustee Deep, uh, Deepu. And trustee Chua were absent. May I have a motion to to excuse trustee Deepu and trustee Chua? Looking for a mover? Trustee Carabella moves. Sec- seconded trustee Powell, all in favor. Anybody opposed? Saying none, the motion carries. I shall now move on to the judgment and closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Sanders? May I have a second there, please? Trustee Carabella? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Saying none, the motion carries. Trustee Sanders, could you please lead us in the closing prayer?
Yeah, well, I mean, um, it's a Jesuit prayer. I I don't know if I mentioned, I went to a Jesuit school. This is one we used to say, so, in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Um, as the dawn breaks on a new year, let's give thanks for all we hold dear, our health, our family and our friends. Let us release our grudges, our anger and our pains, for there is nothing but binding chains. Let us live each day in the most loving way, a God conscious way. Let us serve all who who are in need, regardless of race, color or creed. Let us keep God in our own understanding in our hearts and to the chants of God's name each day. Let us lead the world from darkness to light, from falsehood to truth and from wrong to right. Let us remember that we are all one, embracing all, discriminating against none. May your year be filled with peace, prosperity and love. May God's blessings shower upon you and bestow upon you all the bright, healthy and peaceful. Uh, for a new year. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, trustee Sanders. Good night, everybody. Trustee Ohan Chanada, get some rest. Good night.
Thank you.